I'll now call to order the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, school board meeting of the Stanwood Comeno School District Board of Directors. All our directors are here, Director King, Foster, Murray Evans, and our two student representatives are here, so we have a total full house tonight with our board. Today, we're offering two opportunities for the public to speak. Comments specific to the consent agenda will be allowed prior to the vote on those items. Citizens who have submitted a request to speak during the public comment section of the agenda will be called upon to make their comments at that time, which is near the end of the meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda before you for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular school board meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular school board meeting as written? Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Evans.
Evans.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The board has had the opportunity to review the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March eighteen, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting?
Second.
Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The board has also had the opportunity to review the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, board study session minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March eighteen, twenty twenty five, board study session?
Second.
Moved by Director Evans. Seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. That passes unanimously. It is time for our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda is donations that were presented by our student representatives to the school board, Luke and Elizabeth. Elizabeth.
Nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and ten cents from the Utsaladi Booster Club to cover the transportation costs of the Utsaladi Elementary School field trip to the Stanwood Cinemas and the Spillawamish Tribe Community Center.
One thousand dollars, one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars from the Utsaladi Booster Club to purchase mystery science curriculum.
One thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars from the Utsaladi Ladies Aid to purchase flexible seating fidgets and art supplies for Utsaladi Elementary School.
Four hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents from the Twin City Elementary PTA to cover the transportation cost of the Twin City Elementary School field trip to the Spillawamish Community Center.
Four hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty cents from the Cedar Home PTO to cover the transportation costs of the Cedar Home Elementary School field trip to the Spillawamish Community Center.
Two hundred forty-three dollars and forty cents from the Stanwood Elementary PTO to cover the transportation cost of the Stanwood Elementary School field trip to the Spillawamish Community Center.
A two thousand dollar grant from the Stanwood Comeno Area Foundation for Cedar Home Elementary School kindergarten teachers to purchase supplemental materials for the Amplify curriculum.
A donation was awarded to the Utsaladi Elementary Booster Club through the Olson Family Foundation to purchase the Pacific Science Center on Wheels, valued at three hundred thousand dollars and eight hundred, three thousand and eight hundred dollars.
A donation of one thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents through the Stanwood Comeno Area Foundation from the Floyd and Dolores Jones Endow Fund to aid in the repair of the kiln for the Stanwood High School Art Department.
Thank you to both of you. Nice job on that long list of donations. I think it says a lot about our community in supporting the students and staff in the district. As an FYI, these donations total twelve thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety cents for this month, which is, which is substantial. So, thank you once again to the community and these donors for that specifically. And we're happy to have another round of Shining Star Awards this week. As a reminder, this is one of the ways that we celebrate and keep our students at the center of the work that we do. These awards recognize students who are shining examples in their schools. So, first, Stanwood Middle School Assistant Principal Holly Christmas will present the Shining Star for SMS.
Oh, thanks for the pressure. It wasn't already enough. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about Jayden Alfieri. Would you like to stand up with me so you can be appropriately, you know, chagrin? A big word. We'll talk about it tomorrow. Okay, so, Jayden's awesome sauce. We could talk about a whole list of his amazingness, and I have it right here. But I thought to myself, self, what would best describe his attributes? And that would be a poem. And so, I did not write this poem. I possibly had a electronic aid in writing this poem. But I felt that, and first off, adorableness, but here we go. Good evening to the board and all gathered here. It's time for a moment we hold very dear to honor a student who truly stands tall, with heart, joy, and kindness admired by all. Jayden Alfieri is our shining star, lighting the halls near and far. With a smile that's warm and a spirit so bright, he brings out the best in day or in night. He asks how you are and waits for the reply, a rare kind of care you just can't deny. From band to drama, from class to the court, in basketball too, he gives his full support. A leader, a listener, a friend through and through, whatever he does, he sees it all through. He reminds us of pride in each choice that he makes, a model of kindness in all that it takes. So, Jayden, we thank you for all that you do. Stanwood Middle School shines brighter because of you. Wherever you go, keep leading the way. You've more than earned this special day. Yay! Jayden was nominated by many of his teachers and voted on by the staff. He's an RTA, he's in a leadership class, he's with a band. He also participated in basketball for the first time, right, or second time this year, and just, he truly cares. And he's got school spirit like nobody else. I would like to say, I've been doing middle school work for a long time, and every single Spirit Day, I wind up taking his picture because I see nothing like it, right? You know, he always asks permission ahead of time, he does crazy stuff, and he goes all out. Stanwood High School, you are in for something. That's what I was going to say.
I think I see him in Spartacus on the picture.
Yes, and he loves speaking Sparty, and he'll just randomly, one day, at any given moment, I'll be looking around, and I'm like, oh, so Jayden decided to go put on Sparty. Okay, that makes sense. Why don't we do that right now? So, he's awesome.
Great job. Is there anyone you want to introduce tonight, Jayden, that's here with you?
My mom, my brothers, Jordan and Gabe, my dad, then my first grade teacher, Jayden Evans.
Jayden, there's some awards for you over here. So, I want you, meet us over here.
All right.
put you right in the middle.
All right.
I think that makes me on the deck.
All right.
Oh, sorry. Also, I'm sure.
All right, should I get a one back? Just squeeze in, everybody. All right, you good? You got it?
Yeah, you're good. Your turn.
Hold on, let's make sure it's working. All right, one, two, three. Perfect. Next up is our principal for Stanwood High School, Mr. Washington, up to present the Shining Star for Stanwood High School. I don't know if you have a poem with you, but there's other things happening.
Great. Come up here with me. I tell you, that's a, that's a tough act to follow. This is good, you know?
Nice, Skylar.
So, today, we have Skylar over here, and I'm going to read some information from the teacher, then I'll let you know who the teacher is or who the teacher was who submitted it. All right, Skylar is a tenacious worker who is authentic in her learning and making the most of a high school experience. She shows dedication and loyalty in everything she does as a student. Her involvement in promoting the modern school activities is quite impressive, from being the lead editor of this year's yearbook and the state employee coordinator to girls' women leadership. In addition, she has created her own side business as a photographer, where she has both senior photos and wedding photos reflecting a remarkable degree of initiative and healthy risk. initiative and healthy risk. On top of all of this, she's also employed by local YMCA. The balance act she handles between work, school, and extrapaper activities is a testament of her discipline and desire to achieve. She's willing to put herself out there and extend the young school boundaries to represent the potential that every student can reach. I feel that Skylar represents the vision of what our school district aspires for each of our students to be. Skylar is a shining star in her humility, her dedication to future interests, and engagement within and beyond our community. Mr. Sean Cunningham, current board president.
Alright.
What I would say, we had, at Stanwood High School, I think we had about ten, eleven nominees, and she was unanimously chosen by the staff. So that's what they thought of her. So, great job.
Great job. Is there anyone you'd like to introduce?
I got my mom right there, my dad, my boyfriend, who's Arlington, but... One of my bosses, Aaron at the Y, it's a great place to work. And Mr. Washington, this scudger, I love this scudger.
We love you, Scranton.
No, I like, I like Evan, you know, I, I, I take his pictures as inspirational a lot.
Great. Well, congratulations. You have some, a star to put up over here.
Hi. This is my copy editor. Thank you. I love it. And a lovely plaque that everybody wants to hang on their refrigerator, I'm sure, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I'm trying to do the math of what side. Let's have you on this side again.
Yep. Alright, hey, Mike, you want to get over here on this side?
Sure.
It's getting closer to that TV over there. Alright, now squeeze in a little bit tighter. Unlike your senior photos, you probably do a really good job at it. There we go, good. Alright, congratulations. I'd ask Mr. Washington to stay up at the podium because I'm sneaking in one more recognition while we're at it here tonight, and that is for our new princ, new assistant principal at Stanwood High School, Chloe Abbott. Chloe, would you join Mr. Washington up at the... Quick, some quick information about Chloe. Chloe will join our team as assistant principal at Stanwood High School on July first this year. She comes to us from Kentwood High School, where she currently serves as the dean of students. She's worked as a substitute assistant principal and formerly taught mathematics. She's a passionate educator. Chloe built her career in diverse schools and has been deeply involved in leadership roles, multi-tiered systems of support, and inclusive educational practices. And her leadership has included coaching teachers on tier-one initiatives and strategies, coordinating academic interventions, and partnering with families and community-based organizations to remove barriers and promote student success. So, we are extremely excited for Chloe to join us July first, and have a couple gifts for you too, but welcome to the team, Chloe. Appreciate it.
So, super, super excited for you to be coming to Stanwood High School, joining Spartacus. And this is on behalf of Stanwood High School?
Oh, thank you. So sweet. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to recommend a quick three-minute recess for the families that want to go, go home and catch dinner, or do whatever else you want to do this Sunday afternoon. So we'll take a quick three-minute break to take pictures and excuse yourselves if you'd like. Thanks. We'll cut to less than three minutes, that's alright. We made a quick, quick exit. So, it's, I look forward to the Shining Star recognition, our student recognitions, all week long approaching the board meeting. So, thank you once again. I would like to welcome Mr. Tim Dickinson, principal of Stanwood Middle School, and Holly Christmas back for the school data and achievement report for Stanwood Middle School.
Unfortunately, no poem this time, but equally great things to share. So... Let's click. It's off.
Ah.
There we go. So, this is an update for data. It's all about achievement. I've been working on this school year. So we'll kind of dive in with kind of a quick review of what our AAP goals are for both literacy and math, just going to set the context for you. So, we've boiled it down into just a couple of points here for literacy that we're focused on. It's all around our HMH curriculum, which was adopted last school year, really digging in and utilizing that, utilizing the assessments specifically to ensure students are growing and achieving at the highest levels. We've been working very, very closely with the Port Susan Middle School staff, as well as Dr. Ryan and Dr. Diane at the central office, to collaborate on some of the different things that we can do between the two buildings to really leverage this curriculum for students, utilize our assessments. Specifically, we've been doing monthly assessments for the SBA and utilizing that data with our students as well. We've seen a lot of growth specifically in, in students' approach to assessments as a result of that. So we're really excited about what the spring will look like. But we want to just highlight some specific data points with you in regards to HMH. So, three times a year, our students take the HMH growth measure. So, on the right side of the table there, you can see the beginning of the year, which is what BOY is and MOY is, middle of the year. And in eighth grade, we have seen almost a seven percent increase in students being on grade level. So if you kind of can take your eyes side to side there, you can see those shifts from the red and orange and yellow band getting moved up and over and increasing our band of green, quite substantially there in terms of the number of students that that is, that are now on grade level that were not to start the year. And that is a direct result of the collaborative efforts that our, our teachers have undertaken, and really looking at the student data to inform their instruction in order to make the most of our instructional time with kids. So, we're going to transition to math. Our three, kind of four areas here with math are really, again, same thing. We're really focused in on using data to help support student learning and math creative skills. I know with the elementary teachers who've come, or elementary principals who have come, rather talked a little bit about Delta Math, and that was something that was new for us this year in the middle school. So, we utilize the Delta Math readiness assessments to really collect information on where our students are at, where those gaps are in learning, and then the teachers set some goals around how to incorporate those into their warm-ups, into activities with students. In some of our classrooms, you'll even see some teachers pulling some students aside, almost in a small group, like you might see in an elementary classroom, which is not typical, in order to help get those students the skills that they need in order to be successful and show growth. And so, the data for this looks a little bit different. So, our readiness assessments are broken down anywhere between six and eight different standards that are specifically assessed. These are standards that have been determined to be the most important in terms of vertical success from year to year. And so, if we look just at two specific ones that we've put a lot of effort into, they're, they're related to fractions. So I put down below, so you can see what they actually are, because it's always a weird acronym kind of thing. So it's computation with multiplication and division of fractions, and then dividing by unit fractions, were the two areas that we really, really hit a lot of achievement with. We saw over a ten percent increase in the first one and nine percent in the second. So, really by being intentional, utilizing assessments, and collaborating as teams, we've seen a lot of improvement with our students. And this is just one highlight of it, because as you can imagine, trying to show you this for every single grade level gets a little bit repetitive and kind of complicated in terms of all the different standards that we're assessing and tracking and monitoring with our students. So, similar to the ELA department, they're having regular meetings with each other and really looking at student data, and then taking action in their classrooms to be intentional about what they're teaching and reteaching those skills that, that are missing. So, very, very proud of the work that they've done there.
Can I make sure I understand that slide specifically?
Yes.
This is a check for understanding. Lower green bar is good?
Bars that get smaller is great.
Okay. I was trying to make sure that I was reading that correctly.
The way that it presents the information through the assessment is, is a little different because it's focused on creating instructional groups, identifying students that aren't quite there yet. And so, having less, less, a smaller percentage of students that don't know.
It's backward, right?
It's backward, it's the opposite of what you said.
We were looking for a timer, and you got higher, and I was like, those are lowers.
So, we spent quite a bit of time at the beginning of the year breaking that down with staff so they knew how to utilize it.
Got it.
So, so I tried to highlight that. That's why I said, if we broke it out by all the different things, it would be a lot to get your head...
Just walking through my drawing room.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
So they did very well. To see a ten percentage increase just from beginning to middle of the year was like fantastic. So, very happy about that. This relationship between this and the SBA math, it also does mention... The alignment to the standards is the same, right? So we're assessing the same standards that are on the SBA. The, the way that they're presented is completely different though, however, right? So, in these assessments, they're working everything out by hand, showing all of their work and coming up with an answer, whereas the SBA, it's more multiple choice. There are some short answer questions. So, in, in my opinion, this is a little bit more rigorous in terms of they actually have to demonstrate and show all of their thinking and explanation with their answers. So, what we kind of expect to see is, because we've had a lot of collaboration, we've had a lot of very intentional work with our data, that we're just going to continue to see more and more improvements, and you know, this being something brand-new at, at this level that we're, we're utilizing, especially with math, we're hoping that we're going to see a big bump this year, and then even bigger one next year. We continue to, to refine the work and really understand the assessments and how to leverage them even better. Thank you.
So you, you do intend to continue using Delta Math?
Yes.
Yeah?
It's very, very minimal cost, very easy to swing that and prioritize what the budget process.
Okay, and the data is helpful?
Extremely helpful.
Perfect.
Especially for progress monitoring and identifying where we should spend our time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
On the HM, uh, H?
HMH, yes.
I was looking at your, at the red bars and noticing there wasn't much movement there, and I'm just wondering, are those the same students, or are they different students, or... I, I see movement in the middle, but I'm not seeing it.
Our teams had a lot of, yeah, our team had a lot of conversations between both schools because they think they saw similar, similar trends at Port Susan. The red bars don't always indicate actual students' ability. Sometimes we have students that maybe spend five to seven minutes taking an assessment that's intended to take about thirty minutes. So they're not capturing the full scope of those students' ability. And so, that's where we use more than just one measure to really get where they're at. And this is not, you know, connected to their grade in the class. This is a tool that we have tried to explain the relevance of to them and get them to take it seriously. But, you know, we still have some students that, you know, if it doesn't count for anything, sometimes those red bars indicate a different underlying issue, which, again, two schools have tried to...
How are you guys addressing that in regards to, are they not taking it seriously versus they actually are needing it?
Versus they actually need it. We've, we've made a little bit of progress because as we've, we're getting more families about the assessment, about its purpose, about what we need. We've gotten some kids who recite the assessment that we've identified that, you know, rushed through it. And by collaborating with families, that's helped with a few of those. Some of the other areas are just things that we're continuing to kind of search and see, what are those missing gaps? Is there something we need to do structurally within course offerings to address the gaps at level where things are at? Are there partnerships we can do with special education to try to embed more accommodations and modifications for students? So, we don't have any co-taught ELA classes this year, which we're looking at opportunities next year because that might be a way to increase students' access points, specifically within ELA. So, we're trying to, trying to navigate some of this data and figure out what next steps would be.
And the data are, besides what's here, are you seeing in this particular subgroup, are they having, are you seeing other trends in other parts of their academic picture? So to speak, that might lead you to determine whether or not they are struggling versus wanting to do it.
Versus the engagement.
Yeah.
We, we do. We have weekly, weekly grade reports and look at patterns and things like that. And I would say, a significant portion of those red, students that are in the red column also are, are having the same kind of outcomes in other classes as well.
Can you define for me what a co-taught ELA?
A co-taught ELA class would be a class with a gen ed teacher in yours and ELA, and a special education teacher, and they collaboratively work in a class period together to support students. The special education teacher takes a look at what the lesson plan is and makes suggestions for modifications or adaptations that they can do in the lesson to help make it accessible for all students, and kind of bridge some of those barriers that are potentially there.
I was going to add, this is more anecdotal without hard data numbers to back it up, that our eighth grade team, that this is the increase that we see from last year, they've done a really good job. When you look at that green number increasing and that six-point-eight percent increase, overall, their, their growth as a cohort from seventh grade to eighth grade is also, I would, if I were to guess, at least another six to ten percent increase based on the seriousness with which they took the test last year compared to this year. Our team's done a really good job of getting students to buy in and, and help them track their own numbers and try to increase their scores and see the relevance of why it's important. Additionally, one of the things that we know from the work that they've been doing at Port Susan is that the middle-of-the-year birth measure is significantly more difficult than the fall birth measure. And so, it is a much more challenging test, if you will, than that. And then the only other thing to add is how our social studies teams are helping our ELA kids, our ELA team, excuse me, get our students prepared for the SBA by reinforcing a lot of the expectations that students have on the SBA. So, the ELA goals are not just being served within the ELA classes.
So Willie, I'm sorry, did you, I think I heard you say that this, this assessment's done three times, so they'll do it at the end.
They'll do it in this room.
In addition to the SBA. So, we'll see, we'll see that data while the board is seeing SBA numbers.
And with only one data point, they took it last year, we, it's, it's too early to tell what the correlation is between performance on this and performance on the SBA. But hopefully after two years of data, we'll have a better idea of what that looks like.
I think I heard that on the SBA, it was a certain portion of the students that didn't take progress from another camp that, that skewed the scores because those were recorded as like zeros. And how about in these, what percentage don't take them? Do you know why? And then how's that score?
We don't have any students that opt out of this assessment. It's just students that are absent that were playing, you know, catch-ups, trying to get the makeup assessment for it.
So about how many did you end up getting eventually?
We ended up getting almost all of them. So, again, you know, like ninety-five percent of our kids ended up getting it completed. So again, you know, like 95% of our kids end up getting it completed.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the quick moves you and your staff have made to intervene quickly to shape this instruction. So thank you to you both and your team. The next item on the superintendent's report is the February financial report, followed by the reduced education plan presentation presented by Ruth Flut.
Good evening. This is our February financial report. It's similar to January, so I'll focus just on just a few pages. Financials are as expected at the halfway point in the year. Annual average FTE enrollment was 4,667. That's about 62 over budget and about 26 above last year. Managers' report is as expected, very similar to January. Our fund balance is at 6.2 million, which is 7% of total revenues. And we're still tracking closely with the prior year, as you can see. And this is helping us to not dip into fund balance too much, which is great when we're, because it's providing flexibility for next year. And we'll talk more about that in the next presentation. Our object summary is another way to look at those expenditures, very similar to the other report. General fund, again, $6.2 million in fund balance. And capital projects fund balance is 5.6 million and is similar to last month. Debt service fund is to reflect some taxes there, local tax receipts. ASP fund is, shows typical revenues and expenditures for this time of year. As we get toward the end of the year, they start spending some of that great fundraising that they do. And then transportation vehicle fund decreased due to the payment of two buses that were recently delivered. We'll go to the fund food services report. This one is as expected for this time of year as well, with revenues running slightly behind budget due to the lower estimated breakfast participation that you can see at the bottom of the report there. That went pretty quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Yeah, with the FTE being up 63 over budget, is that a good thing because we get more revenue? Or a bad thing because we have more expense than not revenue?
Oh, you're talking about the enrollment?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yes.
You know, basically, FTE, right?
We did add staff as well. So quite most of that, if not all, were covered with additional staff that we hired at the beginning of the year. And, but yes, in general, it is a very good thing. And it also helps to support maintenance, our material supplies and operating costs as well. That also helps to cover some additional expenditures that we have and increase that fund balance somewhat as well.
Just, you might not have this information handy, so just if you have it at a later date, do we know is our participation in like breakfast and lunch higher at our schools that are fully free schools for lunch and stuff like that?
Yes, they are. You know, for breakfast and lunch, we estimated at budget approximately 60% participation in both breakfast and lunch, but we are running under that at breakfast, which is why you see those participation numbers lagging. In general, yes, there are, the free for all schools do have higher participation than the other schools.
And on the breakfast, how's that relate in terms of timing of the buses? And is it, because the less coming to breakfast, sounds like they're not getting that early, but what?
They're, they should be let in at least 15, hopefully 20 minutes prior to school, to school starting so that they have time to eat breakfast. Shall we move on to reduced educational program presentation? No, sorry. Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Sorry, I was making the computer confuser. As discussed at the March study session, the district needs to make reductions going into the 2025-26 fiscal year to maintain an adequate fund balance. Our overarching goal is to put student learning at the center and of our decision-making process and in support of our promise. Please keep in mind, this is a plan still, and things could change based on new information and updated projections. First, I wanted to briefly speak about legislative discussions that are going on. The legislative session is not over. They are still working. It ends April 27th. The late, the House and Senate budgets did come out from the last time we spoke. And the House budget was the lower of the two, and from what I'm hearing, it's probably going to be, the investments into K-12 education most likely will be fairly minimal. And so I, just to give an idea of the kind of investments that the House was looking at at that time, it included some levy inflationary enhancement. Currently, we cannot collect all of our levy due to the state requirement that we, that a calculation that the state requires that we do that is actually below, the lid that we can collect is below what the voters approved. And so this inflationary enhancement would allow us to collect those additional funds, but still not beyond the amount that the voters collected or approved. And then as you've heard, you may have heard about the big three allocations that the, that we are, or that the state was hoping for, OSPI and other regional organizations are doing. Special education, material supplies and operating costs, as well as transportation. And you can see there in the House budget that there was some additional funding for special education, increasing those multipliers. Nothing for material supplies and operating costs, or also known as IMSOC. Nothing for the prototypical school model, salaries and benefits, and nothing for transportation. We also want, are hoping that they will continue to fund the safety net, but I didn't have, see any, anything that would say that they were going to. So it's possible we could get a reduction in the transportation safety net grant that we apply for. Hopefully that will be included when the House and Senate come together and come up with a budget that is finalized before April 27th. Now, there is a possibility that the legislature won't, will not finish at the end of the session. My hope, I think that everyone is thinking it will. However, if there is a special session, then that moved away. Also included in the budgets generally are what we call maintenance level items. And both the House and the Senate budgets had cost of living adjustments of 2.5%. Sometimes we refer to that as IPD for salaries. And keep in mind, those are unfunded salaries, which means that if we hire more employees than what the state funds, or if we pay additional salaries than what the state funds, then the district makes up that percentage increase on those, on those additional salaries. It also would include a 3% IMSOC, cost of living adjustment. Transportation kindergarten, those conversations, both of the House and the Senate, I believe, had transportation kindergarten being funded. However, it would cap enrollment at either current or prior year levels. And so we'll have to see if, how that might affect us. If it's for, according to enrollment for this year, then we would be able to maintain our programs. And that would, we just wouldn't be able to expand the program and be funded by the state. There, it was a one-time shift of school apportionment payments from September, from the spring actually, into July and August. This is really merely a, an attempt to balance the state's budget in the first year by shifting expenditures to year two. However, it exacerbates the cash flows issues that school districts have by, because spring is our lowest cash flow month and fund balance month. And this, and part of the reason for that is, number one, the end of funding, but also because they did a shift like this several years ago, where they moved funds from September through June into July and August so that they could do a one-time fix to their budget. So our projected budget for 25-26 does have a gap, or what we call a deficit of about 4%. That means that revenues are projected to be less than expenditures. We expect that this gap will be bridged by a combination of general fund, fund balance, and spending reductions. And those spending reductions are, in summary form, $2.7 million. And then these are the categories in which the spending reductions would occur. And the percentage that you see is the percent of that group's total costs. So you can see that administrator, the administrator category would take a 9%, need a 9% reduction, certificated 2.2, classified 2.2, and the non-salaried costs 3% to make up that $2.7 million. In the area of district office administration, there would be an elimination of 1.5 district office administrator positions, a reduction of some department budgets, reduction of other days and hours of some district office classified staff, and for total impact of $657,000 in district office administration. School building administration, reduction of two FTE school administrators. This does include non-continuing positions of, the D positions that we knew were going to be non-continuing, and they were only in part of the year. And so that's why the dollar amount is a little less than you would expect for two FTE. And then school supplies reduction, we are hoping that we can obtain donations or a grant to maintain that, but as of now, that's a reduction of $50,000. The reduction, also a reduction of days and hours of some classified staff, for a total of $351,000 in this category. In teaching and learning, we have some categorical and grant reductions, $76,000. Reduction of up to eight FTE certificated staff positions, as well as some other salary reductions in the area of extracurricular for about $1.1 million. And then classified staff, a reduction of classified positions, days, some hours and other salary reductions for a total of $528,000. Keep in mind that regardless of the area, the impacts, this impacts the level of service to students, to parents, and to staff. And I just wanted to remind you again, the summary version of the $2.7 million reduction amount and those in the areas in which we're reducing. So just to put some things in context, we wanted you to see a list of some school districts in the state that have announced their reduction amounts. Some districts have not reduced, announced their reductions, some districts are not reducing. This is the list that we were able to obtain at the time we submitted the presentation. And Stanley Committee, you can see there is about $2.7 million. And then for context, we also included the enrollment so that you can see some of the smaller sized districts are actually reducing more than we are, and that's personal. And that's all I have for prepared remarks, but sure, I would like to answer any questions you have.
I appreciate you keeping the reductions as far away from the kids as possible. Thank you.
It's not a question, but it's kind of depressing. It makes me sad.
It makes me sad too, yes. Yes, but I would like to, you know, give kudos out to really the entire district, the board, the cabinet, everyone in the district is really pulled together and found ways to save, you know, just naturally in the process of doing business. And, you know, I get calls and I say, you know what, we could do this, and how much would that save? And it just is a testament to, you know, what a great school district we are.
Thank you, Ruth, and thank you for all that you've done, the tireless hours around this work with you and your team. And I really think this presentation reflects the challenges of the current financial landscape in public education. And like you mentioned earlier, that our attempt is to, you know, through our equitable to keep the reductions and the actions that come thereafter as far away from the classroom, like was mentioned earlier, as possible. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Finally, on the screen is the April, April 2025 enrollment report. April enrollment decreased by nine FTE compared to last month, which is a more favorable change compared to last year, which it was a decrease of 15 students. Annual average enrollment excluding TK remains above budget by 56 FTE and above last year's average annual enrollment by 28 FTE. We haven't, we don't put in April's, and you'll see this on the, on the sheet, we don't put in April's running start open doors enrollment from the colleges yet, and that'll be reflected next month.
Just out of curiosity, the, if somebody were to graduate early, does that go into that negative number?
Yes, once they are graduated, they're no longer enrolled and they would not be counted on our FTE tour.
Okay. So potentially, and probably don't know the data, and that's okay, potentially it could just, it could not be all people like dropping out or leaving or moving to a different school, some of them potentially be graduating early or whatever.
I actually have the data for April.
Oh.
And the nine students were, we had one student from Stanley High School. They're an unconfirmed transfer, so they wouldn't have graduated. They transferred to somewhere else and have not enrolled yet. The remainder are spread across the district fairly evenly, except we had several, nine, that were from Saratoga. And remember, not all students are, are at Saratoga, are a full FTE. So, so we had about nine students that came out of Saratoga.
Excellent. Can we get a report on graduation rates and where they went and all of that? We haven't had that yet this year, right?
Not yet.
Okay, so that's coming soon enough?
As far as where students.
Yeah, like are graduated in four years, right?
Yes, yes.
Will you get that report?
We'll get that report, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
That is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Rubinell. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in attendance may speak to the items contained in the consent agenda and only those items contained in the consent agenda at this time. This is not proportionally meaningful. Open public comment on items outside of the consent agenda, open public comments is coming up soon. Are there any board directors who wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Are there any people in attendance who wish to speak to any of these items in the consent agenda? If so, raise your hand or let us know. All hands on the line. Okay. All right, seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve consent agendas, items one through eight?
Move.
Moved by Director King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We have no whole business to discuss. We do have one public comment today. Citizens wishing to address the order ask to submit online requests using the public comment link on our website or by email two hours prior to the board meeting start time. For those attending, many in person request forms were available in the boardroom for submission prior to the meeting's start time. Citizens who wish to provide documents, the board directors will hand them to the recording secretary for distribution after the meeting. And I will call upon those individuals who have requests to speak during this section here. We have one request. Patricia Jordan.
Sorry, I'm a little slow. I did send a email to all of you. Miss Buster was the only one that replied. My issue is I'm against men in women's sports. I'm very against it. I am putting out a flyer, which will encompass all of you who are for men in women's sports. And the flyer will go to senior centers disabled because the purpose of it is that the property tax exemption for seniors and disabled is skewed towards where the rich get the exemption and the poor don't. And I will include all of you in this mailing. So my position is, I'm almost eighty, and I've seen every type of discrimination. And I was kind of becoming hopeful. Women's sports, they're being recognized. People, women were getting higher positions. And then came this issue. They are shaming little girls. And I don't know if you watched Fox or the recent thing with one of the other districts, where the girl, young girl, I don't know which grade level, she would not participate with the basketball team who had a transgender male member. She just sat there. And they actually went after her and shamed her. They called her a bully. And I don't want this happening here. I will not watch any child or any woman be shamed. So anyway, I would like a response from any of you. And I will resend the email. And you, I would appreciate a reply. But if you don't, I will just assume that you do want men in women's sports.
That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything up for reply, I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you for taking time to share your thoughts with us today. As a matter of order, because this is the board's business meeting, the board is providing an opportunity for the public to comment. However, the board does not create discussion on those comments within the meeting as they are not part of the agenda. But comments will be followed up on after the meeting and as of the meeting. We'll now move on to topics scheduled for school board discussion. We have three items. Number one, the board policy thirty-two oh six, sexual harassment of students is prohibited. We need discussion on that. Do we have consensus to move that to a second reading? Do we have consensus to move that on? Number two, board policy five zero one one, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited. We need discussion on that. Then we have consensus to move that on to a second reading. Item number three, the first reading on a new board policy, six eight one five, advertising on district property. Discussion on that one? Might explain that a little bit?
Actually, I'll call Director Communications and call Walter to the podium to give an overview, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. This is a new policy that's, some districts across the state are starting to adopt. It's response in to a way that you can, like, proactively get community engagement in advertising in, on some school sports facilities. Currently, we don't have a policy. And so it's one of the most common questions we get is, you know, a sports team has a banner or somebody who was sponsored, can you hang it up? The answer kind of is no. But the state doesn't allow for it. You just kind of need a policy to funnel that request in the right place. So we've crafted a new state policy and procedure that will help businesses and the community put advertisements in specific places that kind of we have control over, rather than just be kind of the wild west out there. So the idea being that right now, it would be combined to the stadium and the baseball field and the softball field.
Thank you, Director.
All of this is a question.
Would it be like damage on the fences or what?
It would be metal signage on the chain link fences, three feet by two feet. And that's the one and only size that's allowed. And it would be on a, a three-year contract that they can renew every year. And then that money would go to the ASB, and that can be given out to the sports teams and clubs.
So what standards in terms of appearance? Who can do it and the content?
Yeah, so all of that is allowed in the policy and the procedure. They can, they, it's, we are crafted very narrow. So there's no illicit materials, no political advertising, no offensive advertising. Then they ask it approved through the district office. And then advertiser prints it and is sent to our maintenance staff. And our maintenance staff installs the sign when they have some time in the summer.
Mind if it's just businesses or others, like nonprofits or what?
If they are willing to, you know, buy the sign and follow the procedure and the policy, then yeah, it can be them.
How much revenue per year per sign?
Right now, based on what the other districts are doing, it's about a thousand dollars a year. And then five hundred dollars a year for year two and year three. And then the process starts over again. And we have about seventy-five open slots between the three facilities.
Do we have any interest in doing this when the business move away?
Yeah, it is, it is one of the most common requests that I get and the high school athletic staffs get, is how can we kind of support our team to get our advertising out there?
Win one?
Yeah, yeah. So it's better, I think, than, than having kind of no policies and some people trying to find some backdoor way of getting something out there that doesn't quite look quite right. And so this way, we kind of control the material and the size and the location.
Is there some particular place where the signs will be made?
They'll, they'll have to be metal and, and to the right size and have the drill holes in the right spot. And so a lot of these online shops can order it. So it'll be up to the advertiser to kind of pick where they want that. We have some recommendations based off of our maintenance staff that will create a website that potential interested people can follow the steps to go through there. And so we'll get some examples of what they can do.
Just to clarify, we're not buying them. If you want to advertise, it's the advertising that's it. And you have to buy the material for us to pass.
Correct.
Yes. So we're not finding them, they're finding them.
Yep, we're just creating an avenue for them to do it according to our policy.
Seventy-five total around the districts?
Between the stadium, the baseball field, and the softball field.
Yeah, three fields.
Seventy-five slots that it could potentially be.
Thank you for explaining that to us. Since it's a new policy, is there consensus to move that on to a second reading? We have consensus to move that on. All right, it is time for our student representative reports. Who's going to go first?
Okay. Okay, here's my report on Stanley High School. Stanley High School is free force the way down with the school year. And although we only have one quarter left, this quarter is perhaps the most important. It's packed with final projects, exams, events, and opportunities to finish strong. Whether you're a senior counting down the days to graduation, a junior nervous to take the SAT, a sophomore stressing about the SBA, or a freshman who can't even begin to imagine what the next three years will hold, this last quarter of the year is all about focus, growth, and making these last moments count where it matters most. As third quarter ends and teachers begin to finalize their grades, students are pushing onward into next quarter, bringing them with renewed vigor after spring break. AP courses have begun to wrap up their final units in preparation for review before the AP exams in this May. These exams not only mark the climax of a year's worth of hard work, but also offer students the chance to earn college credit, making their efforts now more impactful than ever. Meanwhile, our science department has been performing many labs this time of year. Our forensic science classes have done their blood splatter lab. AP physics has done their fluid buoyancy lab. Chemistry has done their chemical reactions lab. By engaging in labs like this, students are able to connect classroom instruction with real-world applications, which will enhance their comprehension and retention of material. Meanwhile, our ASB class has been hard at work. We just wrapped up our executive board elections, where students selected Ryan Corry to be president, Thomas Mendez to be vice president, Triptamont to be secretary, Joel Dickinson to be treasurer, and Alexa Lay to be ASB Public Relations Officer and serve as the student representative to the school board. Coming up next, we have class elections, where each class will select their very own president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. And after that, we're going to wrap up the year with our annual tolo dance, our talent show, and our end-of-year assembly. And while all, all of this is going on, spring sports are in full action. Our golf teams have found success with many athletes competing in regional invitational tournaments. Our track team sent some athletes to the famous Oregon relays a couple of weekends ago, where Tori Nichols and Barrett Danielson crushed it in their three-hundred-meter hurdles and won their heats against some of the top teams in the country. Meanwhile, our boys' baseball team is off to a strong start with a strong eleven-to-four win against Anacortes and a powerful thirteen-to-six win against Arlington. And the upcoming weeks are set to be filled with fun and excitement for our students and for our ASB. As our year wraps up, it is very, very clear this has been a very successful year so far. And thank you to everyone in this community for their continued support of our students. It is very appreciated and does not go unnoticed at all. Thank you.
Yesterday, our ASB group held our student rep council meeting in which we discussed upcoming events planned for next week. Starting on Monday, oh, starting on Monday, the twenty-first, we will be having a spirit week running through Friday, the twenty-fifth. As well as the final day of the spirit week, teachers will be holding activities in their classroom during advisory, which students are encouraged to partake in and enjoy for community day. Additionally, the night of the twenty-fifth, students are invited to attend the Lincoln Hills Spring Social and treat themselves to food, dancing, and other activities like games and prize raffles. Starting off the month of May, our first advisory period of the month will be dedicated to student reflection and feedback regarding next year's principal and other school policies, which students will be sent a form for on their input. The end, the end of the seventh, and second to last session will be mailed the thirteenth with SBA testing the day before. Students are hard at work as we start our seventh session, getting their best work in and making strides at their high school beyond plan. And that should be all.
All right, thank you. Board directors report on business conducted. Director Evans?
I had the opportunity to attend some of our state of the schools meetings, which I think is really important. We have a tendency, you know, when we need something, to go out to our community. So it's really great to go out just as like, hey, here's some information and here's how we're doing. So I, I think that those are great. And the one that I participated in was well-received. Had some great participation from the audience. So I thought that was really great. I would remind people that the plant sale at the high school is coming up very soon. So please make sure if you're getting flowers or starts or whatever it is, you check out what our awesome cultural students are working on up there. They, I bought, this is not anything, but I bought a plant that was supposed to die at the end of the year. And I actually stopped watering it in like November. And it is still alive and kicking on my front porch and I have no idea how. So they're great plants, they're great for just saving the plant. Don't forget, this week, we have an academic advisory meeting tomorrow. If the assigned directors going to that don't intend to go, and there is an open space, I'd love to attend one of those. So if you don't intend to go, please let me know. And then we do have another study session for the board on Thursday as well. We'll see if any people there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we still have a few more of those state of the schools coming up here.
Yes.
So thank you for doing that, Superintendent. Director Murray?
Well, I also got to attend one of the state of the schools, and it was very well-received. And I want to also thank everybody who has had a chance to fill out the board's survey that went out. And we had quite the response. And so we're looking forward to going through that data and helping it make, using it to help make some decisions in the near future. I also got to go to the P L, which is social emotional learning training that our staff went to just before spring break. And it was very well-received. And it was very, I very much appreciated several of the breakout sessions and got to learn lots about different aspects of social emotional learning. So, and then lastly, I, I have bought plants, a plant sale too. I have this beautiful golden fuchsia that has lasted like four years going now. So, and it's getting ready to bud and everything. So that was going to be, I, I told my husband, we couldn't buy any plants last weekend because we have to buy them in the weekends. And then lastly, just something I did outside of the school district. I went to the, Snellish School District has a community foundation that they have specifically for their school district. And so I got to go to their breakfast and learn a little bit about what they're doing in their community to help support our students from a fundraising standpoint. And so I'm looking forward to possibly bringing some of that information to our district so that maybe we can try to creatively support our students, especially with budgets shortfalls. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Director Murray. Director Foster?
Thank you, and thank everybody for coming. I do intend, Ellen, God willing, being at that academic committee, I'd like to see what's going on, see if we can work in conjunction together on that. And have some ideas. I look forward to learning more. And we'll go with the community on that. So thank you very much for putting that on the schedule.
Thank you, Director Foster. Director King?
Yeah, I attended one of the community presentations by Superintendent Ryan, who was at a realty agency with a whole bunch of realtors there. Basically, it was there. And they were very, very interested in it because I guess quality of schools is a real big deal for our houses.
Thank you, Director King. And I guess it makes it unanimous, we've all been to those state of the school presentations you've done, and they were well-received. I'm just so grateful for all the donations there. I think that's, I don't know what the record is, but that's, that's outstanding. And congratulations to our science, our students today. And welcome to our new assistant principal, starting in the high school this summer. I want to thank all of the staff for the work that's gone into our state audit here, which is wrapping up this week. We appreciate that. That's gone well. And the two surveys that we had out, the annual one concluded. But we also did the separate one on the superintendent. I haven't seen high marks like that for a long time. So we'll be hearing more about that. And I'll give you the last words, Superintendent.
Well, I was going to say, it's, it's hard to be at the end because as you all talked, I ticked off them in my list that I wanted to just highlight as, as the night went on. But I, I do want to say thank you to the community for continuing to be involved, not only here, but also in, in the schools. And there's, as Luke and Elizabeth talked about, there's lots of activities that happen all the way K-12 in our schools that can use support from the community. And we just appreciate that that's something that we do here. So thank you for that. And then as, as Ruth talked through the reduced education plan, this is not
this is not something that is an easy thing for staff or the community. And just appreciate that work that's gone into that in trying to keep the reductions as far away from the classroom as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And next meeting, we'll give you the first shot.
Okay, after the students. All right.
We'll work our way down.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, there being no further business, the April 15th, 2025, brings the board meeting is adjourned.